Moves for approval of the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Announcements, July 24th, Finance Committee meeting, 7:30 a.m. And August 11th, regular board meeting, 6 o'clock, right here in this room. Do any members of the public wish to address the board? Not, we will move on to reports and Dustin, you're up first. On the construction reports.
You're being nervous, I thought you...
I didn't even mute the password.
Alright. So, construction updates, should we start with the middle school first? Alright, so I'm going to go right down and start going through pictures and then I will read through the pictures just to give a visual while I'm talking here. So we'll start with Area A first, so anything that happened in June, we installed all the floor protection, demolition activities. We did a lot of rough framing, mechanical, electrical roughens. Maybe I'll just leave it like this, this is big, is this big enough for everybody? And then our drywall installation, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing underground, I don't think you can see the drywall in these pictures, but rest assured it did happen in between when those pictures were taken and handed tonight. Then, work that we have coming up in Area A is going to be interior painting, Area A, clarify, administration offices and cafeteria area. Interior painting, we're going to do ceramic tile installation, casework and countertop install, acoustic ceiling grid install, light fixtures, plumbing fixtures, and flooring installation, that's all going to happen throughout the month of July here. Talked to John Norby here before the meeting and it sounded like they were actually going to try to get paint installed, that way they could get, or paint applied, and then casework installed here sometime in the next month. And then I'll scroll down to Area B. Gymnasium and surrounding classrooms. So, work that happened in June, floor protection, demolition, removing all the existing doors. And upcoming work that we have going on in July is going to be mechanical, electric, and electrical fixture installation, painting the lower level and installing the flooring in the lower gym. And Area C, media center and surrounding classrooms. So we did have floor protection, framing, mechanical, electrical, plumbing installation, and some underground plumbing. I don't know if you can see any underground plumbing in here, but upcoming work that we have in July here is we're going to have interior painting, ceramic tile, casework, acoustical ceiling grid installation, and installing light fixtures, plumbing fixtures, and flooring installation. That's all for pictures, but from the front entry, I will say, I shared with a couple board members here before the meeting, but we're pouring, we will be pouring concrete footings and foundations here this month, installing drain tile aggregate, and hopefully pouring the sidewalk to the front. But one thing that we did encounter here this past month is there was an underground, underground fuel oil storage tank in the front of the building, right where the handicap ramp goes. So that put us behind a little bit, but we did work with the MPCA, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, figured out how we could get rid of the contaminated soils and to get rid of the tank properly. So right now we have some of the contaminated soils onsite and storage bins in the lower parking lot, I don't know how many bins there are, I want to say there's about seven dumpsters in total, is what I heard last. Tank is gone, and now they're starting to do soil corrections underneath the tank today. I think backfill is supposed to happen today, so I think we should be getting back on track. Any comments on Grandview?
Yeah, any idea where those tanks came from, the fuel tank, I mean, I mean, it obviously wasn't being used, it had to be there for a long, long time.
It was actually abandoned in place, so it was filled and abandoned in place, but they still had some old fuel in there. Like when we cut, you actually cut the lid off of it, and you could see some of the fuel. I have the picture up beforehand, but it may be hard for people to see, but here's what it looked like with the lid cut off. You can kind of see this little area right here, you can see some of the fuel oil.
Dimensionally, that thing was probably around, what, eight feet in diameter by thirteen feet?
It's pretty close, yeah.
So that was, that was probably peeling the whole school at one time.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Back in the day, right?
And sure, what was the year, Kevin, you probably know, what was the year Grandview was built?
Fifty-eight.
Okay, so probably it was just one of those things that they knew it was there, they figured they were doing the right thing by just burying it and forgetting about it.
Kevin, I didn't realize you were there when it was built.
Yeah.
Came right off.
I was going to say in your wall, but maybe not, maybe I look exactly that right now.
Hesitate for a moment.
So does it, do you actually have a physical date for sign up on when, you know, what going to have to do for mitigation, if at all, or?
It's already...
So it's already...
Oh, yeah.
You're already beyond that?
Yeah, I think it has to sit on site for seven days, I don't know the real reason for it, I should have had that ready for the meeting, I, we were talking, Brian, night before the meeting, maybe off casting, but it has to sit on site for seven days, meet inspection criteria, then they could dispose of it properly.
But no cubic yards of soil had to be replaced or added in?
Oh, they'll have to haul back in soil that was taken out, for sure. And where the tanks at, so anything that was taken out is getting replaced.
So, right now, we feel with the Grandview project, we're, we're on schedule, obviously working through some different things, but we'll use all the days in August, but we're, we're doing alright.
Yep, I feel good. Depends who you ask, though, if you talk to the site superintendent, he may tell you something different. West Tonka High School, before we get too far into it, one thing we did have to adjust was some of the phasing here. I'll come up to the board so it's clear. We did adjust some of the phasing here in this corridor. Right here, and because of the addition delays, we did say, okay, this is not going to be turned over in time, this area, I think this was reflected last month, but we were able to come up with other classrooms right up in this area to offset those not being done in time. And the corridor, explanation for that is there's an existing tile on the floor. So one of the things that we bumped into is when you rip up the tile, you're going to be ripping up the mud bed with it, so it's an exorbitant cost, but we just want to make sure we're doing it the right way too when we do do the replacements, so one thing we had Ron do, they're a special testing inspection agency, they came through and did a chain test on it. And what that is, is they checked for hollow spots with the chain, never done it myself before, but that's what they did. After the test, they deemed about ninety percent of it would need to get replaced. That's too much work to handle this summer, especially with all the work that's happening right now, so that's getting pushed to next year. And if there's a way to do it during the school year, we'll figure it out, we'll be working closely with Kevin and Jolene on that one. We haven't gotten to the point though, if we can phase it during school year yet or not.
So I think when you look at what's getting phased, I mean, there's a little bit of the new construction that's pushing things, you're going to see the administrative area that kind of pushes on this, and so really just working with our phasing plan to show what we're seeing right now as those dates. There's a lot of work happening next summer, and I think that needs a little bit of some exploring, just to make sure that we feel like we have a plan there that we can deliver on, but I think the big piece right now is that for school start, there's a focus on those classrooms getting turned over. It'll, you'll be, definitely there's construction happening with the new additions and that front entry, so the north entry will not be something that we will be utilizing this fall, beginning of winter, we'll be running everyone through the courtyard. We'll obviously have the emergency exits for people, so there's, we'll meet all of those codes of how they're going to go, and there'll be pathways for them. And then there'll be ways that we separate construction from students as we're going through.
When do we think you know what entrance, entrance is going to be available then, or is that next year still, or is it during the school year?
Right now, they have that north entry, the administrative and the counseling labeled as January. I think we have, once we're more out of the ground, we can better confirm that piece, but I think right now that's where it's slotted. I think there's a way that we can get that entrance before it all opens, and we just have to work through some of those details.
The parking, the parking lot, because things are being delayed, and to see where everything's parked out there, are we going to use parking space for students?
No, I think one of the agreements, no matter what was happening, we have to park across Sunnyfield, right by the ballfields and those parking lots right there.
Okay.
And if there's people that are allowed to park inside the tennis court area, they can park there, but no, we're not directing contractors that they're going to be allowed to park onsite. We don't want them to take spots away from students.
Do you feel it's going to be tough on the pavement across the way with the equipment and stuff being?
No, I think a lot of like the heavy equipment will probably get stored on the tennis court. As far as like construction parking for orders, they'll be over there. That's not to say somebody's probably not going to sneak in.
So what's, okay, can I have the layman's explanation of the, I didn't understand, there's hollow spots and mud, I really don't get. So what's, what's the problem with the tile and the corridor, in like normal terms? We're ripping stuff up, but we can't rip it up?
Or... Yep, so let me see here, so let's pretend that this is the tile, and there's a mud bed underneath the tile. I think there was hopes that we would just be able to take the tile off.
Like you say mud bed, you're talking about dirt?
Concrete, concrete.
Mortar?
Mortar, yep, that's what it's about. So we can't take this out, or we can't take this tile out without damaging this, so it comes up in chunks, so you got to take it all out.
I see, okay, so this, I see, so what, so you have to, so is there a way to take it out without damaging all that, or you have to repair what you damage?
Well, I think that's kind of an unknown in the documents, I think we're hoping that it wasn't going to be that way, but it was.
So, because they have to take out the tile and now the sub base, it doesn't fit in the schedule for this summer with that? Because originally that was all going to be done.
Yep.
But there's no way you would want a chance, I mean, you have, yeah, you got to take it all out.
Right, we talked about a lot of options.
So if you have a corridor to the classrooms, then? We can still have the corridor, we'll just be using the existing tile.
Yeah, we're not...
That's what I was asking, okay.
It's going to stay.
But what it, what you'll have is, we've taken out locker banks, and so the tile is going to be, we're going to be cleaning tile, that you're going to have these squares that are concrete squares and that are going to look, not as a finished product, it's definitely going to be safe for people to walk through.
On the, on the tan portion, the lower, lower left-hand side there, you have a dark brown now with the brown or the black bars across it. Is there, that's not really showing up on the color key, is there some sort of special significance to that area?
It's bleachers.
So that's...
The gym.
Okay, but it wasn't anything?
Retractable.
Are you referring to the little areas here?
Yeah.
Just the bleachers shown on the lines.
Okay, so no, it's still all part of that phase?
Yes.
I just didn't recognize it in the, in the chart, I thought there was something significant to the color or something.
Dustin, how long would that tile project take from start to finish, just, I'm not holding you at anything, I mean, is it something that could be done during a holiday break, or is this going to be?
It's going to take a lot, you know? I would guess somewhere in the realm of a month and a half to three months. By the time you do it all, because it's a, that's a wide corridor with a lot of work associated with tile too.
I had a twelve by twelve with that kind of a mud on it, when I took it up, it was almost a month of weed, just going out, I'm sure mechanically you'd do it with machinery, but a chisel and a hammer, basically. It's concrete, you know, and it takes a lot to get it off the concrete.
Well, can this, can we hear David?
You'll get, I'll probably finish by the time the next...
But one thing we kept lying down is we want to make sure it's done right too, so we want to have the right plan in place before we tackle it. We just didn't want to make a hipshot decision saying, okay, let's do this.
And if you're putting tile back down, there's just no way you won't be able to do it all.
Is that why they often keep the mud up with it?
Yeah, it, it happens often, especially in bathrooms. Because of certain depressions, like generally sometimes you pour concrete, there's a depressed slide in there, so you have a mud bed to bring it up to a certain height so you can slope to a drain. So sometimes when you have that sloped area, you'll have a mud bed underneath there that'll have to get ripped up.
So for delaying that, can those resources be used somewhere else to accelerate?
Unfortunately, there's not that much tile, other than the corridors, I mean, you, you still have some wall tile up to a certain height, but nothing that would be...
The people that would, that are not going to work on that this year, going to work on it next summer, could those people work to accelerate another phase? But their tile contractors, the only ones...
And on that scale, his specialized machinery that's going to be chipping that up, the guy riding a little trailer and then go pneumatic hammer with a wide blade of wall.
That's probably upsetting, they'd be doing it during school hours, a little noisy maybe?
We're going to challenge that thought, we're going to try to look. Well, because I think our, our intent is to try not to have too much squash mentioned next summer, so we don't have something happening where we're biting out more than we can chew. So that's why we're going to keep investigating, if that's what needs to happen, we'll, we'll have to plan ahead of time.
There might be some ceiling with plastic wrap and stuff just to keep dust out too.
Yeah, well, let's isolate those areas, yep.
So I think, I think one, we're, we're tracking opening these classrooms for fall, we're going to use all summer to do it. The additions, as we communicated due to some of the permitting, the weather in June, delayed that portion, which is having a little bit of an impact now on that front entrance of when that opens. We run into different things, tile is an example of what, what's required and how to do it, and so the team is working on how to position these projects. First and foremost is always safety of students, of how do we make sure that's in place? Then it's obviously making sure that we have an educational environment that works for our kids, while trying to stay on time and work with it. One thing that really worked out well for us great on this budget, probably not the music I want as I do it. We now enter Kevin's file. But we, we've done...
That was Friday night, thirteen thousand points.
That we, we go from, I was talking about the educational environment is we're just going to keep on trying to update the board, the staff, as we work through this and put it in a good position. We had great bid results that put this project in a phenomenal spot, and so again, our scope is fantastic because of those efforts, and it really puts us in a strong position of how to oversee this.
So is this, this is much bigger job than what they thought, so is the bid already in, or are we going to have to pay extra for that, or?
Contingency?
Well, there might be some that comes out of contingency to pay for it, but I mean, you paid for the demo no matter what, you paid for the tile no matter what, so the only thing you'd be paying for would be that mud bed.
Yeah.
And a little extra demo for it, but I mean, as they're...
But that's not ideal economics to us.
I think there's, I think they had to figure out, but there'll be a cost.
Sounds like it's a lot more work, though.
There'll be a cost, yeah.
Good.
Each, we'll be talking about at facilities meetings, we're going to be updating so the public and you are aware of how we're progressing. Really feel blessed to have the opportunity of doing the project, we just got to work, work through it, and it'll be fun to turn over when we're at that point. I think he's showing some pictures here, and you're seeing similar things, like we saw in Grandview of studded walls and sheet rock is going up there as well.
Yeah, and you're seeing it about a week behind, because we did have about twenty drywallers in here on Saturday, hanging drywall and taping and sanding. So they're, they're staffing it pretty heavily right now.
Good. How's the outside work going, is that really, it's things, footings later?
We did get some footings in. So the plan is to start laying steel this month, and we have it on the radar to start setting precast this month too, at least that second level precast floor.
It's all pouring on Friday.
It's around the north side?
Yeah.
Good, yep, they were forming that when I was out here last Thursday, good. I don't think so, unless you wanted to get details of everything. But yeah, as of right now, everything's looking like we're going to get students back into the building.
That's a good thing.
Which is the only option, but I mean, I don't want to say anything else either. Like, they're going to get in.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dustin.
Thank you.
As the spouse of a teacher, and as parents of two children, I will tell you, there's a lot of angst about the space next year in our family, and where teaching is going to occur, and I will say, it feels, some of the feedback I've received, a little still unknown and unclear.
English, right? Is, is, they're going to be in those, in those questionable areas, yeah?
Well, I think she's going to, no, they're going to be moved around.
Yeah, that's for, for a while, right? Yeah.
So we have, we have a plan of where staff and students and the plan of how that's going to go, we'll be communicating it out to families. Like we did at the end of last spring, we have some classrooms in the Performing Arts Center and other spots, and it's, you know, some of that at first, you might say, oh, that's a different place for a classroom, then you look and that's, it works out quite well. And so, there's some of it that we just have to work through with staff and get, get those routines. I would say it's, some of this is like, like I'll say, you're, you're renovating, renovating your house, and you're doing your kitchen, and you're working through it, and the result is good, and you're going to work through some of that piece.
Washing dishes in the laundromat.
As long as you got your answer.
That's right.
Yeah. Ralph, you're up for treasuries report.
Okay, we'll start with May 2025, Wausau, staff and retiree recognition, five hundred dollars, Squares Waltsburg and Mace, staff and retiree recognition, three hundred dollars, and Miss Hilltop Primary School, twenty dollars. Box tops for education, West Tonka High School, six dollars and sixty cents. Friends of West Tonka High School, West Tonka High School, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and ten cents. Charities Aid Foundation, West Tonka High School, eighty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Ohio File Prince, West Tonka High School Athletics, twenty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. West Tonka Wrestling Boosters, West Tonka High School Wrestling, twenty-six hundred dollars. West Tonka Hockey Boosters, West Tonka High School Girls Hockey, eight hundred and ten dollars and forty-eight cents. Rotary Club of Mount West Tonka, Community Education, twenty-five hundred dollars. Marty Fisher, West Tonka Administrative Scholarship, one thousand dollars. Crime Prevention Fund, Crime Prevention Fund Scholarship, two thousand dollars. Melissa and Cheryl Dale, Cheryl and John Dale School Scholarship, twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. Mary Excel and Kathleen Lomar, Larry Excel Scholarship, one thousand dollars. Butch Humbert, Larry Excel Scholarship, two hundred dollars. Blackbaud Giving Fund, West Tonka Catholics Club, twenty dollars. Jeff McCurry, West Tonka Class Country Club, seventy-five dollars. Alaris Financial, West Tonka Deca Club, two hundred and fifty dollars. For June 2025, Hilltop PTO, Hilltop Primary School, two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Box tops for education, Shirley Hills Primary School, one hundred and eight dollars and sixty cents. Charities Aid Foundation, Shirley Hills Primary School, two hundred dollars. Shirley Hills PTO, Shirley Hills Primary School, five thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. West Tonka Middle School, PTO, West Tonka Middle School, twelve thousand, fifty-six dollars and thirteen cents. Blackbaud Giving Fund, West Tonka High School, twenty dollars. Charities Aid Foundation, West Tonka High School, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty cents. Charities Aid Foundation, West Tonka High School, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty cents, I think I just said that. West Tonka Baseball Booster, West Tonka High School Baseball, five thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. West Tonka Volleyball Booster, West Tonka High School Volleyball, fourteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. West Tonka Softball Boosters, West Tonka High School Softball, five thousand dollars. West Tonka Baseball Boosters, West Tonka Baseball Club, eight thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. West Tonka Football Boosters, West Tonka Football Club, twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Ameriprise Financial, West Tonka Football Club, sixty-two dollars and ten cents. Charles Hayes, West Tonka Track Club, eighty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. And Mr. Chair and fellow board members, I've looked at the May and June financial checks and checks ledger, and all seems to be in order.
Thank you, Ralph. Kathy, we'll move on to the financial report.
Alright, good evening, board. Tonight I will be giving you a sneak peek of the revenue and expenses through June 30th, 2025. It's hard to believe we're through another fiscal year, that's my, my favorite time of the year is when we come to June 30th. I want to note that the information tonight is just a snapshot in time as of right now. So, the revenue, the expenses, we'll be actually, or I'll be actually reporting again on the same June information, but at that time, a month from now, I should have a lot of the audit work done. And so, through the end of June, at, at this point, for revenues, we have collected thirty-nine million, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, or ninety-three point four of the revised budget, which is represented in the yellow column. Again, keep in mind that we haven't done any audit entries, so deferred revenue, we haven't booked any of our receivables from the state, and again, that, those will be done over the next month and a half prior to the audit. Expenditures through the end of June are forty million, seven hundred and ninety-one million, and that is ninety-nine percent of our, again, revised budget represented in the yellow column. Again, at this time, it shows that we're just slightly under budget, but we haven't done any chargebacks, we have OPEB dollars to account for, to offset some of the benefits expenses, and then we have outstanding bills, things are still coming in the mail that will be clocking back to June 30th, so again, when I looked at a year ago, at this time in July, those percentages were at that same price point of where we were, so as we start digging into all the audit schedules, we feel pretty good about where we are as of this point in early to mid-July.
We anticipate receiving the rest of the state federal funds?
We will. We are receiving updated student reports, and just generally speaking, the state always holds back ten percent, and so we have a lot of receivables that will, that we have forthcoming from the state that will be recognized in next month's report. Okay, just a few other items, I mentioned the audit, we'll, we are scheduled to have that the week of August 25th, and the audit is scheduled to be remote again this year, and that prep is underway, the auditors will be here for the formal report in October, and that morning, the Finance Committee meeting will get a preview of the audit in, in greater detail. The 25, 26 title applications, those are in progress, I always partner with Mark Femright on those. Long-term facility maintenance approval, in order to qualify for long-term facility maintenance revenue, school districts annually must submit a ten-year revenue expenditure plan and a statement of insurances, and so you'll see that on the agenda later tonight. And also, intermediate districts and other cooperatives have the opportunity for long-term facility maintenance dollars as well, and they have the same reports to do, but in addition to that, they need each of the other districts to submit a resolution acknowledging that cost for our district or the levy authorization, so again, you'll see those on your agenda later tonight. We have an upcoming Finance Committee meeting, we have a lot of construction going on and negotiation update, so we'll be meeting in a couple weeks, and that's all. Any questions on anything?
Title applications, can you just take a second and explain what you are doing with that?
Sure, the title applications are, are federal applications, so it's Title I, where we offer additional support to students, they don't qualify for special education. There's Title II, which is teacher improvement, it's honestly, it's a very, it's getting to be a very small amount of money that we receive from the federal government. And there's, those are the two that we qualify for now, and the, the dollars are becoming a little bit less, but we still have to make a formal application, there's a lot more reporting, a little bit more red tape than just the general state aid that we get, so.
So the, the school, the school district in 25, 26, you explore and then make the title applications. Is there a date or a set time in the year when the applications are actually approved then?
Yes, there's, there's a cycle of three, you make your initial application, then that's the fall, and then, we actually, it's kind of strange, but with federal dollars, we don't actually get our formal allocation to know what we'll really receive until the spring. And so we do an initial application, we do a winter check-in, and then we do a final application, and I think it's like, do like April 15th.
Do those figures have to be then formally entered into the budget?
Do those figures have to be then formally entered into the budget?
Yes, and, um, so we, we'll have a better idea, um, when we do our revised budget. But we do have an estimate in our adopted budget.
Any worries from the standpoint of what, what the federal government's doing? I mean, uh, to, to funds for us?
Yeah, there, there's always a concern, um, but, um, um, again, we just kinda keep our ear to the ground and, and, um, a lot of the, the funding for our federal programs is tied to free and reduced. So, um, it is not the biggest part of our budget. You know, every penny counts and of course we're concerned. And so, um, the allocation that we did receive is small. I think the state's a little bit concerned, so they, they're just, um, doling out a smaller percentage just, uh, schools. I think just for them to be prepared. And so we're, hopefully this spring when we get our final allocation, it'll be, um, more favorable, so.
Are you giving a fair and reasonable warning potentially from the state that there may be some clawback?
Possibly, yeah. They, um, I, I don't think anybody knows. I don't, Kevin, maybe you've heard more from your organizations, I haven't.
I, I think that's pretty, pretty fluid. I think, uh, West Tonka is probably gonna be impacted less than a number of school districts. Different districts are gonna be impacted depending on how they qualify. Obviously, all funding coming to the district is appreciated funding. It has a purpose and it has a place. And so we're, we're, um, we're sensitive, we're monitoring. But I think our position might be a little different than others of just how much we qualified in the first place.
Um, great questions, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report, Kevin?
Yeah, so, uh, just kinda continue, continue on. We've had a, we've had a really, uh, busy summer, obviously the construction. And part of the update is what, uh, Dustin, uh, was presenting of the physical changes. A, a lot of work on trying to adapt with plans and then come up with our operation plans. Again, uh, safety, uh, being the primary focus, uh, the effective learning environments for our kids. And then just the excitement of, uh, Grandview having these new and that one will be completed. We're excited that the tennis courts are now online and we've really got great feedback for that. And I think it's, um, you know, it's a great example, just tennis. So we went through the construction for them. We went down to six courts. Some of those courts needed a lot of work and we get on this side of it now and they have some of the greatest courts there is around. And we're excited about this kinda being a theme of just how we're working through it. We're gonna have these changes that we're gonna adapt. Really feel good about the team that we have, our staff of how we can, uh, make best of certain situations. And yet, uh, just a lot to look forward to as we cross that. But right now, a lot of effort on how we're going to operate in new spaces and operate with some spaces that are temporary, uh, to continue to offer a great experience for our kids.
Tennis courts are awesome. Both my kids have got a chance to play it and we have nothing but positive things.
I stopped out there the other morning and I talked to some of the pickleballers and they're just ecstatic. And then I had a couple of people playing tennis, I talked to them, they go, this is just fantastic. This is unreal, you never thought we'd see something. I mean, it's a lot of positive.
I've been to a lot of tennis courts around our area, we have the best ones by far.
Hey, I'm, um. I really believe it's gonna be, uh, a theme of this whole project. And yet there's, uh, you know, there's the change part that we're gonna go through. And lucky that we have, uh, some colleagues and staff that are really talented at what they can do. Um, we've, uh, done training and the parents are gonna hear about this coming up and staff. But, uh, simplifying some of our, uh, standard response protocols. So if we are going to put students on a hold, on lockdown, et cetera, how we can communicate that effectively, simply that people can understand. So really working through some of our vocabulary in those actions. Had a great presentation by, uh, all-day training by the I Love You Guys Foundation. Our law enforcement was involved, all buildings, all programs, from adventure club to food service to custodians. Uh, we had a large number of people there. Emily did a great job of organizing everybody to get them all in that space. And then also working with all of our principals that are emergency handbooks and communication, a lot of different ways, really coordinate this. So, um, that's a great effort that's going on. We have policy, we talked a little bit about goal setting. Uh, we hope to have goals for the board to approve at the December meeting. And that will be our strategic priorities. And then, uh, this spring, we'll have, uh, the administration bringing to the board goals for the next school year and have that before. So that process continues to go forward. Uh, first board meeting where I'd say West Tonka Middle School, West Tonka High School, uh, different coordination with those efforts and that's, that's going well. Uh, would encourage people just to be really mindful, um, if they're on campus this summer, just, people just have to watch where you're walking and then parking lots, different things. There's, there's trucks and there's tivity and it's, as we're in a phone culture or just kind of getting our, our thoughts, it's really the time to, uh, be aware and watch around. And we got different ways of trying to make sure everyone's safe. But really appreciate everyone's, else's efforts to stay focused and know where you're at. Uh, with, uh, action items that are before you today, Kathy talked a little bit about the, uh, long-term facility maintenance and that process. Probably one other thing of note is, uh, we have the resolution with the upcoming school board election. And so people will be, uh, filing for that here in a couple of weeks that are interested in running. And then also we're increasing the athletic registration fees by five dollars. It's been some time since we've done that. And when we look at some of the costs associated with it, uh, this clearly doesn't offset it, but it's important that we make an adjustment here so we can, uh, better keep pace with where expenditures are with those programs.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, chair moves for approval of the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Move on to discussion items. Uh, first one's gonna require a roll call. Lauren, would you be willing to do the roll call?
Yep.
Thank you. Chair moves for, for approval of action item seven A. Approval of the resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school board district reelection. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we need, there's no idea, maybe here for the second. And then we need to do a roll call, um, to see, um, who's in favor and who's not. So I'm just doing it alphabetically, so Brian?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And here.
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor, thank you.
With that, the motion, motion carries, thank you everybody, thank you Lauren. Chair moves for act of approval of action item seven B. Approval of a cooperative sponsorship in wrestling with Holy Family School. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? I just had a question. I mean, we seem to have a pretty successful wrestling program. Is this just a numbers thing where Holy Family doesn't have the numbers? Or are we struggling with numbers or?
I think, I think where it is, is with, uh, so it's, it's that there's numbers there. It's filling different weights and this is, uh, you has a good position for the program.
All right, let's start right now. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we did that already. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item seven C. Approval of long-term facilities revenue in intermediate district two eighty-seven, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item seven D. Approval of ten-year LTFM expenditure projections and statement of assurances. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item AE. Approval of increase in athletic, uh, athletic registration fees. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any further business, anybody wants to bring, bring out tonight? If not, the chair moves for, um, adjournment, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good rest of the summer, guys, it's July.